I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I moved you through the minutes as written.
One second.
Discussion?
Aye.
Aye.
What's on it? Public comment?
I wanted to announce that there is a community board training that will be occurring on February 10 in Alberton. It will be at the community center from noon until four. This would be of interest to anyone who serves on a community board of any type, whether it be nonprofit or on the school board, and to arrange attendance. The cost is $25 and we're going to arrange that with Emily Hart at the, I guess, new extension.
What is it again?
Community board training. So, general information about responsibilities of a director on the board and how that fits in with community management.
You got it.
I don't know.
Double A, that.
If you were at the training two years ago, I understand it's the same person or at least the same information. So it's true and it's your extension. I believe that somebody put-
Was it-
... services center.
Or-
Something where I went to-
Similar.
It's more towards the board than community.
Yes.
Rather than council.
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Council reports handled?
No. No reports, calls.
I'm glad, I haven't seen anything else.
Deer running the street.
Deer running the streets.
No, I didn't.
I do have one question coming up. We have the grant application in to go for one of the playground area at Frank James. And if that grant is approved, and I emailed them again and they have not responded at all yet, I'm hoping tomorrow maybe, is like a $15,000 minimum playground equipment, minimum payout on playground equipment would be $24,000 that doesn't include freight or like the surface area. The other thing that we've been bouncing about, and kind of I'll tell you a little bit about it, last month was a skate park down there in that area behind, kind of across from the community church, the area that would be, would be the street if it was extended into the highway. And Roger and Rodney have been working on looking at different layouts and different things. There's a grant through Fish Wildlife and Parks on land and water conservation. You can apply for up to $150,000, but you have to have, it's a 50% match, which means you'd have to have $150,000. The ones that we've been looking at are anywhere from $50,000-
Yeah, even down to 35, that's pretty minimal.
Yeah.
35 up there, right through on the stand.
So-
And they have increments, 35, 40, 50, 60.
Right.
All the way up, just depending on what you want.
And in the capital improvement for the park right now, there's $60,000 worth, probably $10,000 to $15,000 to put in at the end, towards the end of the fiscal year. Definitely would hold out enough towards this other grant or whenever I hear from them what they're looking at. And then there's also some in the regular town capital improvement that we could use too. If we, if you want me to apply for this grant, it needs to go in by March 30 at, I don't know, we need to get a resolution. So I'm wanting some guidance over what you want me to do. So I would put the, yeah, I would put the resolution in the next meeting or early, early March meeting. And Roger and Rodney are kind of measuring the base.
See how much room we actually have. It's a good chunk of land.
Where are you thinking?
Right behind, if you're coming down 7th heading towards the freeway, right next to the church. Right at the very end, there's that triangle shape.
And then like the one, the one layouts that we've been looking at, they did white halls and they gave white hall like a $10,000 to $13,000 for the playground equipment. They bought up so much and then they also left big money to purchase as well. And the, kind of the cool thing about this is it's not put into the ground permanently in the one layout. They can come to the town, the kids are, you know, people come to town saying, you know, we're tired of this layout. And the guys can put the four boards down and-
Change the layout.
Change the layout.
So it's not concrete.
It's not concrete. That's one of the reasons I haven't looked at Tony Cox because they want concrete in the ground. And that's a huge project to try to get a grant through there. So.
I'd say really good.
I'd say go ahead and shoot it.
Okay.
You know, I don't know.
No, I wasn't, I wasn't, I was looking at what we could afford with what we already have as matching and stuff would be, would be available. But I wanted to make sure that we had approval before I put the effort into the resolution and the application.
Well, you start to cover some kids who are commedies, who don't have a lot to do. So as far as I'm concerned, you know, that's a good thing. You know, gives them something to do and keep them out of trouble. Hopefully.
The skateboard stuff comes and goes too, but I think about two years ago, there must have been, there were kids everywhere going on skate. They were getting run off the bank, they were getting run off. Everywhere they were on the course.
Well, you'll see them.
They were going off the post-
They'll take inline skates and everything else.
Yeah, where the post office thing. Yeah.
It's for, it's for skateboards. That's what a skate park is, a skateboard.
It's designed, but you can use inline, you can use anything that's got wheels, basically.
As long as it's not motor.
Yes.
There's a guy that runs around, you have a skateboard that is motor.
Oh yeah.
Yes.
Oh wow.
So do you need a vote on that?
Do we need a vote? No, because I'd have to, I have to bring the resolution back to the council. I need some guidance as to whether you want me to proceed to the end of that point that I pointed out to you. So we know if we have a resolution. Yeah.
We're gonna do that.
You know, I don't know.
I'm sick in the mind of yourself.
It's the whole right of way, so you've got 50, 55 feet this way and then a steel block in behind that fence, the whole of it. We'll measure it out and compare it to some of the lines that sent to us.
Crime report. No hearings in the town and one appearance on a warrant and two status hearings. Status cases. Sharp?
Trying to survive.
Cool, no activity.
Other than we're still adding water. It's slowed down a little, so it's about every other week.
So you didn't buy, how many, about $5?
Or, or.
You say you put water in for about five hours?
Today.
How many gallons did it?
Well, I don't know. We don't have a meter, but it's a two-inch line, full, full open, running for five hours. That's a month of water.
All checks and meetings being done, all testing has been completed, one water hookup done.
We did have one call. I told you at the house, it wasn't hard, we checked everything.
Water, water. All checks and meetings being done, all testing has been completed, one water hookup done.
Did a hookup for the Bellevue there up there, I mean, they're running on water lines. Maybe she's got visions of more duplexes up there at some point. So she had a one-inch line, a two, three quarter, and a two-inch right off the six and three, all the way up to their rain ringtones.
It's still digging.
Putting it to all the buildings that are there and the potential buildings.
Yay, yay.
All piling and sanding being done.
So you, maybe not everybody knows, but it's four inches or more is the requirement by the town when you go out. That doesn't mean we wait till four inches, but sometimes, because we've been out many times trying to get the slush off and went out today and get some avenue. We went out, plowed on Christmas, and then it did that freezing rain, which really ruined everything. It became slushy and then I went out and got, when you do it, you think you can get it, but you can't, it's ice. So you're scooting off just off a little bit and then rest and then six, seven hours later if it stays warm, you got a little slushy. So with this warm weather, we've given some headway in some of the avenues. If it stays warm, we'll go out, push that little layer off. Just had one lady writing in saying, please don't plow me in, she's on for a battle. Like half goes to one side and half goes the other unless you're on Riverside. Riverside people are like, if we turn it, push it all the way to the other lady, you know, they're fast.
I just got asked if we didn't make sure that was sand.
Yeah, the sand. I went out specifically on Christmas and sometimes after, when I wrote them all down, nothing.
I had one person calling, he said, I wasn't even doing six miles an hour and I was sliding along.
Yeah, that's a, that's a story. And the county, the county, yeah, the county sands it every time they go out too.
I forgot to tell you there were two at about six.
Four, three.
Fire. Four emergency calls, two training sessions, recruiting and retention, and public relations. Alvin.
He's trying to survive.
Well, don't sit next to here.
That one has been taken, sorry.
Yeah, as far as the house fire goes, we had, it was up Cedar Creek. They are in process of getting a home put in there, so inadvertently gave them a house. They fill it up and fill it up, so they're in process of doing that. That was good. Mostly vehicle semi-erection, semi-fire we assisted the other day. For St. Regis, they, we were, we gave them a thousand gallons and, uh, it was very, uh, quiet. Been quiet since, we have absolutely no calls for months and then we have four, five, six of accidents, so it's quiet.
And we see the word you say. Don't use the cute words, come on dude.
Say that out loud.
Council concerns. Unfinished business, EPA super fund update. Mr. Reed.
Following the excavation up at the Delphi, the first 30, 40 feet that up had contaminated, so it was in it. Dealing with EPA, they said, they're out of money, they're out of business. So anyway, I spread out the alarm call and I got a call back from Duke Lynn and she said, nah, I told you I pulled some money away, so. Trying to make a visit here and test the property. Thinking the property in between, their column, right, they don't think that might be specific. Cannot find the test for the Catholic Church site. Remember I ran somebody down from, you know, signed up immediately, so I remember they'd come in. That kind of prompted another little project of talking to the CDM that did the initial phase of the interviews and signing people up and giving the license and they, I asked them, I said, are you still sitting on those releases? And she goes, yeah, I think they're all sitting in the files. Anyway, and so they turned off their own sometime. But they think that they also do this candidate. It's overtime. I think Judge Seifert, Susan Keen. Did go through that walk through over there, fielded about seven, eight calls, emails about the soils process before that. I think that HRC tried to tell those people that you get the bid and then you have to kind of, those guys are just nervous and they're all trying to come around. Is it possible it's going to be this? Still been getting the call. See how it works out. I did tell, I told people though that testing was on the property, there's been traders there, so we have traders saying, no testing. Visual inspection, we're putting soil. There's going to be excavations, it's going to be outside. So I think that other than the EPA said also by the way that they're putting. So the, if you find some contaminated materials, then it's going to be, we can see if we can find something like that. Just on another, majority of the establishments were inspected. We'll tell them. Inspected. Start a whole file.
Beautiful part of the town. Well, all the banners are up. Phew, they took a, ah, I don't know how long to do that. So they are all up and in place and, um, we'll talk about the historical moment down here and the new business, so. Add beauty and interest to our town.
Couple things on the swim pool during the last week, it was, the swim lessons were discussed of how many lessons there were and it was pretty easy for us to figure out over the last three years exactly how many in-town lessons were given, how many out-of-town lessons on the kids, how many kids attended each year. You'll see a decline, 15, 16 were about, about 77, kind of flipped between in-town and out-of-town. And then this year there were 53, 20 in-town, the rest were out-of-town kids. So when they say there are hundreds of kids using or taking swim lessons and that, no, they're not. So, and then the council had instructed me to contact Tom Orr and MMIA regarding liability of running the pool as it is. And in your packet, there's two packages of emails from them and yes, coverage can be denied if you continue to run it knowing that there's a problem. If you, you know, most of your exclusions, errors and omissions, you can be excluded, you won't have coverage if something happens and you haven't acted in a responsible manner. But you can read through all of that. And then one of the questions that was brought up that Rodney and Roger had was because they're both licensed operators of the pool and if they run the pool for your orders and something does happen, you know, you can be held personally responsible. They can be held personally responsible also. And Tom Orr's comment on that was that the town would have to indemnify the employees who run the pool. So there's a lot for the council to consider on those questions, but I think they gave a pretty thorough examination. If there's more questions that you want me to ask them, I can send them off. We tried to come up with every question that would cover what, what we kind of talked about at the meeting and all that. And I think Roger still plans to be checking the spring.
Yeah.
To see what's going on there.
Yeah. Spring, we'll drain it, plug it, fill it back up, see what happens. That'll just, well, we're going to camera that line, it's big enough to camera, so we'll camera it first, see if we can see any obvious void.
The five inch, the five inch you're looking at.
If it's that wide though, you don't need to fill it all the way, do you?
Um, I don't know. I don't think so. I'm hoping not. I think we can get maybe the foot over deep.
Take a reading.
Because it went all the way down into the deep end before, so.
Does it drain, is that the deep end?
At the very deep end, both of them.
Yeah, you wouldn't necessarily, I could go like, foot, two foot. You can have a lot of pressure there.
Yeah, that's a lot of weight.
So you think you have a way of looking at those smaller?
No.
Things? There's no way to check those?
No.
If the leaking is there, the smaller ones, then it's not.
Yeah, and they were talking pressure testing. It's pressure testing's fine if you can seal everything, but those, each one of those little vents is a metal insert that has crosshairs in it like that with a screw threaded thing down in there. But it goes down into every pipe and there's atom, so to get that all sealed and then get a hold of an end and be able to put a tap on it and pressure tight, that'd be really tough.
Where, where are those located? How far up on the walls?
They're on the bottom.
They're on the bottom too.
Yeah, you got the main line running right here and the heating ones are right next to it.
All underneath, not underneath the concrete.
So then, and you don't think it's on top of the skin?
Yes.
His comment that the city needs to consider running a bond for it, does that mean a bond for repair or on?
Like if you repair, if you built a new one or whatever, yeah, you'd run, you'd want to run a bond, the council's running a bond for it. If the, but that's supposed to the public, was to run and approve that.
Build a new pool, we're talking about.
So, but that's, I think I asked him and MMIA all of the questions that I could come up with, talked about. So if you have any more, more, you can ship them off.
Big of a project, isn't it, to research a bond.
Um, you're going to have to, it's what we've told the superior swims, you have to start with the preliminary plans.
Hire an engineer.
Hire an engineer.
Hire an engineer, you gotta have your costs, because you can't run a bond unless you've got costs.
No, exactly.
I think we could hold off on that portion for a while, that's, let's wait and see what, let's just let me, um, uncontact with them. Matter of fact, I had a meeting with them. So as far as, they're still planning on raising money to, you know, build one and then turn it over to the city. So as far as running the bond, that's a hard thing to pass. I mean, the guy at, with the school and that lost pretty heavily. So I think for right now, we're waiting.
Do you have a discussion on the pool stuff?
Well, I'm just, I mean, I voiced a lot of concerns last month. We've got the letter here from insurance or MMIA basically telling us that we're risking being uninsurable here and highly liable, the lawyer says, yeah, liable, you need to hire an engineer and see what's wrong.
That's a tabby, yes, that you can see that.
No less than what they were last night.
The one from Ann Comack says, coverage may be denied if the town is violating any regulations. They're not violating any state regulations, correct?
No, that not to my knowledge.
Okay, and then also coverage can be denied if you have any deliberate dishonest act of admission. Well, we've informed them that we have a problem, so we're not, no longer-
But if you also, one of those in there also says if you run it, they can deny it if you continue to run it in the-
Condition that it's in.
Condition that it's in.
Well, that, but the motion was made not, not to run it unless it could be repaired.
Right.
So we don't-
So it's just a matter of now waiting until he finds out what, what we can find out.
Test the bond and then-
But the big question was, was what kind of liability does the town have? The town has liability personally? You have liability?
Well, yeah, you would have, even if it was a top notch change, the town still has liability.
It's just what you want to be fiscally responsible for the community.
Well, I think we can see that test doesn't always make a shift. That's my opinion.
Right, Roger, discussion? Okay, update the I-90 Superior.
And these are like the changes that you talked about, and the only thing that I did change was when you had floating river. I changed that to river floating, because floating river can be a real interesting concept.
Yes, yes. That was my dyslexia, you know.
So that was the only change that I made in there.
Floating river, yeah.
I like the one on the wall.
Me too. I do too.
It's big, it's bold.
Yeah.
It's not cluttered.
Easily readable.
That's valuable. The cost to the city.
Yeah, it should be about $4.75, somewhere right near.
How much more is the, um, to the bottom?
Are we going to put together a brochure or something like that? Which is, you know, talking about the hiking and fishing and river flow.
Well, that would be a good idea. You can work on that, Richard.
Yeah, sure. It's all yours.
The train runs through town too, I think you know it. Yeah, the train runs through town too, I think you know it.
The idea of the brochure, you know, just walking, like I said, tonight when I walked over here, ten deer between Austin and the library, saw two otters, we live right on the river, two otters, ice pack flow coming down, we had a beaver, I mean, and there's a lot of beetles. So, anyway, I think there's, you know, something in the brochure to get into birds, you know, whatever they look at.
Yeah.
Places to go. Because we have a lot of wildlife, or a lot, and especially birds, there's a lot of different kinds, oxen, kingfisher, a lot of different ducks. We had a trumpeter swan, we've also had, last several years, a tundra swan. You know, I think there's, I think a lot of people go out of the way to go. Those tundra swans, generally, that's not a part of their regular route. In winter in Utah, they generally go further west to get to Utah. So, you know, we have something like that, and if we had a website or something, or if we had a burger in town, if you're willing to put some of that stuff by, you know, you'd have people come on.
I feel that.
What would you, what would you pick to get you a burger?
Get, have a design and then call a printer.
I can dummy up a brochure, I think some of you have seen my brochure for my otter from fishing, lots of pictures, few words. And I won't take ownership of it. I think something else on this, you know, we've got three city parks, and a part of that brochure should be pick me, because, you know, people have to travel, uh, to a place, an hour, maybe a little, or ninety minutes, or hours, give them a little square.
Bring your skateboard.
Bring your skateboard.
Plug in your car. Any further discussion?
Aye.
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 New business, fire chief.
You just need another hat.
He's already told me no.
Tried that one.
I don't, I'm not good on computers, and I, you know, that's, that's my only downfall. I mean, obviously, I have the experience, I've been on the department twenty-three years. I'd love to take the role, but I just, I have a full-time job, I have my side business to run, mine's a club, fire department, so, I mean, I'm kinda like mayor, I got gloves of hats. I, I would suggest, the guys I had meeting, and we talked about it, right now, the guys are kinda crippled, because nobody gets to advance ever, once you hit the one spot you're not. They would like to be able to step up. I would like to move in the chief's role, but I just don't have experience on computers or grant writing, or... We would like to put out there that we'd like to move up, you guys could hire somebody like a secretary to do the grants and the paperwork, instead of having to keep like a chief simultaneously, and give the guys something to look forward to. Just to let you know, in about four or five years on the clock, I'm gonna be back there. Steve Temple, he's the other assistant chief, he has his businesses, he's gone a lot because he's on the river, and very, I don't know, very close to Hawaii and very well-toothed. So, I've been here by myself for a little over a month, so it's a lot of work, but we're doing good, handling our calls, so, I got a couple of new guys, one's right here, Ron, White, and the guy's working in Napa, he's going from down and going to, both of them are in, so, just kinda throw it out there, you guys have more options of what the guys would like, and I would like to help.
If you had somebody else helping with the computer, how would you feel about it?
I have no problem with getting it.
There's many things, if you're like me, you don't like computers.
I, I can't type on them. One of them guys' sister has to look at the computer every time.
Well, let me tell ya, I had to get into it at my work, and, you know, it's basically it's repetition. Once you, once you keep doing the same thing over and over again, you get it. But, I understand your force in there.
I'm at no rate, I'm kidding.
Well, you would in my work, because you have to write your stories and punk in and out on them.
I did succeed to do a five-page town fire report, though. It didn't take me all day. So, that's just an option for you guys, I mean, I have no problem, I just, that's my only problem. So, I know what you guys are kinda looking for, and that's kinda one of my flyers. So, if you guys would like me to stay, the chief, I will, but don't panic, I have it for now, so, anytime.
Tomorrow will be okay.
We'll revisit this in here.
So, just putting that out there, it's, you know, I did bring up to the other guys, actually had a good turnout, and eight guys showed up on a good team, so, and two of them are out of town, so, yeah, we should be, right now, we're having, averaging anywhere from two to six guys on the call, you know.
Thank you for calling and reminding me of all the questions.
Yeah, I tried to call you on the phone, I told everyone that I'm there.
That's perfect.
As far as the qualifications on the, on the computer part, so, what if we took, and say one of our part-timers, we took them in the office, added some hours for them to spend, would that be something that could be worked in?
It could be, um, one of them is the, the grants that they're going after, that's where John came in very handy, because he could, he was able to do those grants, applications and that. A lot of that is administration not just being on the computer, it's fire reports and stuff like that, and we don't have that today, for those either.
I'm doing the fire report right now, it takes a little longer, but, I'm pretty sure for a month or so, I'll, 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 I'll do it. Just, new, I've never been in an office in kind of a whole year.
If I could just interject here, my name's Ron White, recently moved to Merrill County, from Ravalli County, spent twelve years on the Corvallis Fire Department, captain there, and I'm very familiar with grant writing. I'll just give you one example, when I first joined the Corvallis Fire Department, I realized that we did not have a swift water rescue program, so I wrote a grant for include training and gear for a swift water rescue program, and that program has flourished over the years, and so it's kind of one of my legacies I'm pretty proud of, now it's a fully functioning swift water rescue program that has grown over the years. So, I'm familiar with writing grants, and I guess that there's been a lot of, a lot of surplus, you know, equipment that we could tap into, I was pretty fortunate to have a good example with Jim Knapp, the chief there, who's been really aggressive as far as writing grants and painting surplus equipment, and just basically getting his hand on whatever he could. So, I've had a really good example in terms of that, and have a little bit of experience writing grants. And so, just recently came down and, and joined the department, or filled out an application, plan to be an active member of the department, and very interested in playing an application for a group. So, I'll just sort of introduce myself, and say, we're new active down.
All right. In the process that you're gonna do, that you post the position in-house, five days, out, by business working day, I think business days, you gotta have efforts, anyway, and then, if there are no applications, no qualified applications, then allow to, I mean, that's what we've done on all of ours, and so that opens, definitely opens up the open access to bring in the motions.
Yeah, and one other thing I'd like to say too is, I have worked for the Forest Service in the past, and now I go as the AD on a disentment management team, so I kinda have a little bit of background there, and I realize how important it is to maintain those relationships between the county and the Forest Service, because you own what you have, land of the county, and I understand there's a lot of concern with subsidies and whatnot, so, I do understand how important those relationships are, the relationship to, 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 to get a lot of contact with everybody.
Ron?
Yes.
Did I understand you to say you moved down here?
Yes.
So, what brought you here?
Well, so, we, when I bought some, or recreational property that turned into our permanent residence, our plan was to possibly retire the van, and use the property as some recreational kind of a, a deal, but after the first weekend, my wife said, let's move here, and so, permanent, and, and, yeah, we liked the area, you know, living in Ravalli County on the Corvallis Fire, we respond to over five hundred calls a year, a lot of medical calls, there seems to be a lot of people, Ravalli County's the highest county in the state, and there's not a state department on it, you know, it's kind of good and bad, double-edged sword, you know, there's a lot of tax base there, but at the same time, a lot of people, and so we, we're, um, because of, definitely there's a lot of, yeah.
More deer, more deer. You're running it down. You walk home tonight.
We have to post it in-house. Open it up. Open it.
Yeah.
I make mostly, post. Guy will be the fire chief in-house.
Any further discussion?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Go.
Good evening, council, mayor, and park. So, I was here at last month's meeting to propose the possibility of the bin to be located here for our residents to utilize, and I do apologize that I wasn't able, I didn't understand the timing in order to get you this information in advance, so, we should be able to go through it fairly quickly now. So, I had a little quick review here of some of the key points in order for this project to be successful and sustainable, is that I thought that the bin could be paid for in a shared cost arrangement by working with local businesses, who would of course benefit from this, besides the residents, that the bin would need to be located in a place that would be secure, locked preferably, in order to not have unwanted items dumped and accumulate, so that then it became a problem, and then going along with that, that if we were able to have it babysat, and what I mean by that is, the bin in Alberton is a good example, it's located in the feed store's lot behind that fence, which is closed in the evening and locked, so, even though you could get through that fence, they've had very little problem with unwanted items being removed, and of course, the bin is locked. And then, in connecting with the public to see if they would service this and what that fee would be, and then, of course, basing that on what Alberton was doing. So, since last month, I have met with Emily, and we drove around town, looked at several sites that I had identified previously, and Emily had as well, and we basically came up with that best location would be the town shopyard out on Long North West, because that is locked in the evening, and there is of course adequate space for the truck to come in, turn around, dump the roll off, and of course, retrieve it then in the future. This is the same place where the community cleanup has occurred, so then the community would be also familiar with what that location was. We also met with Brenda in the town office and discussed with her whether or not she would be willing to manage the financial end of this, which would include accepting the donations that would support the bin, and then, of course, pay the bill, and the bill, and the bill, which will be, it's predicted to be every thirty days, roughly, that's what's happening in Alberton, we won't know until the community starts to use this, how quickly that bin will fill. It holds roughly three thousand yards, so, that's a lot, paper, and cardboard, and so forth, so. Came up with the idea that as a benefit to the residents in the town, should the town determine they wanted to support this, and would contribute X amount per month to support it, and just to point out that there isn't necessarily a monthly rotation in this, it would be based on when the bin filled, the public would be called to change out with a car, and that's happening at roughly thirty days for Alberton, but anyway, that to announce this availability, to show this as a benefit to people who live in what I was referring to as Superior proper, but those who pay taxes in Superior and who have a water bill that they are receiving, could perhaps now receive a sheet of coupons that would tell them about the bin, and allow them a monthly deposit into that bin at no charge. For Alberton residents, because Alberton town does contribute to the bin, they are allowed to use the bin at no charge, and that people who work at the feed store pretty much know who lives in the town limits and who doesn't, and they solicit them for a deposit in a can on the counter, but then, one of our board members, because we're set up as a 501(c)(3), goes in and picks up those funds that are managed and by the feed store and solicited from the feed store, so, the babysitting part became a very key element to the success of this, because there's roughly twenty-five to forty dollars a week that's contributed into that can, yet it seems as though this should be a benefit for a resident who lives in the town limits, particularly if the town decides to support the bin. So, the suggestion then was to do coupons. So, there is an individual who lives in Saint Regis who has expressed interest in being the babysitter or the person who persons the bin, and would then be there for when the residents came to deposit their commodities into the bin, to ensure... residents came to deposit their commodities into the bin to ensure, number one, proper items are being contributed because if Republic starts getting things in that bin, like microwaves and sinks and things that have accumulated in the bin in Alberton, they will no longer want to provide the service to us, so the service goes away. But this would be a very beneficial service to this community because it would really offset the cost of their trash service because of what could go into that bin, the cost of providing the bin is so much less than the cost of trash service, then it will be very encouraging to people to participate in this. So what I did then is put together a letter that's on the back of the letter to you, that it's just a draft that perhaps could come from Brenda, and I do apologize if I don't know your last name, Brenda.
Ronnie.
I don't know that, anyway. So this was just a rough draft, and that I did contact Republic and confirm with them what they would charge and if a bin in fact was available and if they would do their service with this, with contracting then directly with the town of Superior since Brenda did agree to manage that. So that cost is $4.50 a full. And I want to be sure that you understand that's not $4.50 a month, that's each time that they come and switch out that bin. And they really want to be bringing an empty bin, they come to pick up the full bin because that's how they then can manage this. $4.50 is paying the guy to drive the truck out here, the cost of the fuel, et cetera. Besides then, what they do is take it back to Missoula, dump that bin, bale it all up together. Those bales then are transported to Spokane, to their MRR, which is their materials recycling facility, but that bale is busted open and ran through the machine, but then there, town thing, if you live in the Spokane city limits, you have somebody that comes around and picks up your all-in-one and it's then brought to this MRR, so they want to support that MRR. So then this is another revenue, another stream, another commodity stream coming here from Montana that supports that big machine and very few people in terms of jobs. So back on the beginning here, I alluded to the fact that perhaps at some point in time, and perhaps rather quickly because this is what's happened in Alberton, the bin support financially has been great enough that it could support paying that individual who would person the bin and babysit it, but that's not part of how our model will work, but that's what I'm suggesting for this model. It's something the individual from St. Regis is interested in, and she's also interested in perhaps a phase two of this to where she would go around and do pickups. So then, as I've suggested here in the letter from Brenda, to support the $4.50 a month, that perhaps the town would be willing to contribute $100 per month to support the bin pulls in order to then encourage the businesses to support likewise. So that's what this additional list is then, I took from the Chamber website of businesses that I've now since found out in talking with other people here at the meeting, some of these businesses are actually St. Regis businesses. And here Ronnie, here's the whole list. Didn't make it.
Brenda's gone and told me.
Okay, so I have since, since I came here today, drove around and I identified 13 additional businesses that work on that list that could be solicited for their support in this bin. For the Alberton bin, there are four businesses who monthly support that business, and then we have additionally the contribution in the can. So I hesitate to say this, but we have a ton of money. We're well, well ahead of the game. So this was such a benefit to the school, they paid us for the year in advance because they wanted to ensure that bin was there and that they would be able to then now offset their garbage, because this is diverting garbage that would be in their big black bin, that in Alberton is $120 a month for a big black bin. I don't know what the rate is here for commercial.
About the same.
Is it about the same?
At least that's what the pickup is for the one of the city shop. It's about $16, $16 a month.
So my contention is that why the more participation in this and diverting the recyclables and commodities that will go into the recycle bin will reduce your trash rate and that will encourage these businesses to participate as Valley Grocery, he was able to get rid of a bin and he was thrilled to get rid of that bin. He just wanted to be sure that bin was going to be across the street and he could continue to divert those trash that was actually recycled.
Right.
And save money in the, in the, in the long run, so.
So have you ever got to the point where they could give household pickup, like the driver or whatever? Herbside, yes, thank you, that's worth. Do you, you would want to work with Republic?
Do we?
About, well.
Or do we want to create a job ourselves here?
I'm not, I'm not saying not to, but what kind of a contract do they have as to picking all that up? I mean, you're just going to be stepping in their area and they're, oh, I would think you'd rather communicate with them around or...
And just to point out my last name.
I don't.
I've been really leery of that.
I don't.
And I've been very careful not to start this.
Yeah.
Until that contract is more or less done. There's a little less than a year on that contract. But they've shot themselves in the foot, if you want my honest opinion, by raising the rates. There are numerous people in the Alberton area based on this project who have canceled their garbage outright because they don't need it. And they might share, a couple residents in a row might share, but the Republic really doesn't like that. But they don't seem to be very progressive in terms of trying to do some type of a project like this. Emily has suggested to them, gosh, could we do something here at the transfer station that would be convenient? They, they just don't see that benefit to them. And it would be, but my proposal is that we start small with this, include Republic, and as time goes on, see how it works, unless the support of this individual from St. Regis that is very interested in being a part of this, because she is willing to walk around with me and do the follow-ups with the businesses and be sure to solicit their support. That was part of the key even in Alberton, that the letter went out and nobody responded. But then when I walked in and started talking to the people and they could see that yes, this was going to happen, then they began to participate by writing their checks, yes. And so I'm willing to do that for here and I, my understanding is this gal is as well because she has a vested interest in this because she'd like to offer the pickup service.
At least to the businesses.
To the...
I think she was saying the businesses, not costs to happen, but to the businesses.
But that could be another phase because there could certainly be, I mean, for such a small amount, we're not talking a corporation, we're talking an individual that lives in the neighborhood that would like a job in their neighborhood, the cost of that service would be very minimal compared to what a corporation wants to charge us for our trash program. And honestly, if they don't care to be progressive, let's provide a job there locally, or two or three. I think it's very doable.
And then one of the things that we talked about when we met is, and I contacted Diane regarding the DVR camera system.
Yeah.
That, there were, they're just DVR camera system, there were three of them, currently two are not working, and they were donated through the Railroad Day Foundation, but she, and she said she would try to find out anything else, but she has not done anything else yet.
This is Railroad Foundation, never thinking of that.
At this point, two are not even working.
Right, right. But there's a potential for having a game camera, and I don't know who that company is either that provided those cameras, but I'm sure there are security companies that if you wanted something for the town yard. And which brings to mind this individual coming and working in the yard in St. Regis and how would they be covered by insurance or Workmate Comp or OSHA, any of that? So, and if they started as a volunteer?
Volunteers are covered, yeah, we're covered because we're already in the ways, you know, part of the town. And then the volunteers would be one of it, especially event volunteers.
Okay, okay, that's good.
So it would be different with one individual person that was under, you know, because they'd consider...
Oh, if they come on a regular basis, it's different?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay, I see.
Yeah, it's kind of like the Friends of the Library, there's different volunteers because we cover all of the Friends of the Library, which includes the State, the Long Street Alberton Library, it's a beautiful thing. And it's based on up to, you know, and then it bases on like $50 a quarter or $100. And it's so like with that amount, it kind of runs it down to, oh, it's probably about $60, $70 to a year for the weapons and hardware stuff, you know, it could be different in places that's not an office, uh, done. People probably would work on the rate like these guys are, which is probably like $6 per gallon.
So correct me if I'm wrong, so everything goes into one bin?
It is an all-in-one, correct?
Okay.
With the commodities on this.
Then Republic's taking it as a balance and shipping it off.
And then they sort it into a can.
You have an individual who's willing to volunteer for two days a week, whether you buy the rest or only open two days?
I would propose to start that way, at two days a week.
Only open two days a week?
Yeah.
And the bin would be locked, otherwise?
And then, yeah, it would be locked otherwise.
It would be locked.
And the Alberton bin is locked all the time. When you come to the bin, you go in the store, ask for the key, and then you are able to get in. But it seemed like for this application, it would make more sense to have set hours that would be advertised to the public, though if this individual were to do pickups, she would be able to have access and a key at her schedule, but she does her pickups.
So I guess my question too is, the bin itself locked?
Uh-huh, yeah.
Okay, then the yard is open.
Completely.
Correct, right. During the day.
Right. And that, that's why we talked about cameras.
Yeah, and that, yeah, I'm kind of surprised that you have a name. You have anybody steals stuff from the yard?
No.
Never?
Never.
Really?
So, and I see a lot of the businesses on the chief, some are, quite a few of them aren't in town. Are you proposing this to let, like, the rest of the county, like people in the West End and everybody come here to fill the bin?
The Alberton one is open for that at this point in time, and you are asked when you come to get the key to contribute to the can to support the cost of the bin. And that's what this gal would do, who would be personing the building. So yeah, it could be open to everyone. The original plan, when I first set up this project with the bin in Alberton, was then to replicate this in Superior and then perhaps in St. Regis. But I think that it's quite likely that this bin could handle this whole West End and Superior should be the benefits for it.
Okay, so you asked for soliciting, is there a set amount that you asked for, or what if someone says, no, I don't want to give anything, but I still want to throw my recyclables in? What do you do there?
From the big people, well, then we have to say, I'm sorry, we are paying for this, and so for you to participate, that goes hand in hand, that you help pay for the cost, especially because we know we're saving you in your cost of your trash. So the town of Alberton contributes $200 a month. The school paid $100 per month, though they paid all of their year in advance. The Valley Grocery and the River Edge Restaurant, et cetera, pays each of those, pay $100 a month. Those four entities have supported the bin on their own. And so I was thinking that Durango's, for instance, this would be a huge benefit to them, they would be perhaps at the $100 level and working to get up to the $4.50. So if the town of Superior were to do, I don't know if you thought that 200 would fit into your budget, as Alberton felt 200 would fit into theirs, and then each of the, the largest contributors are going to be the restaurants and the watering holes. And then following that would be the school and then the hospital. And the hospital is only going to be perhaps less than the school because of their waste energy burner that they'll be using all through the winter, that it burns pellets, but they put their cardboard into it as well. So they would be looking, and in fact, I've been talking to Monty for over a year and him wanting to get this bin actually located at the hospital, but that's not the best location for it. It needs to be in a quiet little nice place where only the residents are aware of it because they're the ones that are, this is for, not people driving up and down the freeway that, oh, look, is that where the trash goes? No, it's not. This is, this is benefit for this community and this is a good way to control that. So my hope is that the town will say yes.
I would make motion that we at least send the letters out and let Laureen see what we can come up with as far as support. I don't know how to put out a motion, but you can help me with that.
One second.
Whatever that motion ended up being.
Recycling is a good thing and it does...
Group starts the process for the recycling.
Okay, there we go.
I think step one really needs to be contacting businesses.
Right.
Getting commitments from businesses.
That's the law.
Yeah. See what...
You get enough to write that, businesses are going to have to hit taxpayer funds.
Well, the, the taxpayers would be getting the benefit from the coupon that would make them feel good about, now, here's the benefit of living with bin in town limits, I get to use the baby cookie because I've got my coupon. But if they end up being somebody who has, maybe they're in eBay or they buy a lot of stuff online or they shop at Costco a lot, so they have tons of cardboard or whatever to contribute, well, one trip's going to be free each month, the following, and they would be asked to contribute to the family, to support them, makes it fair for everybody.
I do that, but the fact that I think the town should put in some of the money, and the coupon idea, because I think people that are, you know, they're paying the taxes and they're hooked up to the sewer, we had to increase the rates, you know, that would make them feel like, hey, you know, at least I'm getting something for being in the city limits, you know, I'm getting some benefit for that, extra tax unpaid, you know. So I think that, you know, we as a town could put in some, I don't know how much, you know, $100 a month, you know, to come out of our funds.
How many residents are there in Superior proper? How many residents are there in Superior, Alberton?
Eight hundred and eight, yeah, eight, four and a half.
Because we calculated based on three hundred in Alberton, and it ended up being six dollars a year that was the cost to the resident, to the bin.
You know, when you talk residents, you're talking taxpayers, you're talking all residents together, women, children.
Yeah, we're gonna, the eight forty is all. Have zero, whatever.
No, I'm sorry, that number was-
There's four hundred and-
Twenty, we put.
Four twenty?
That's water bill.
Water bill, yeah, hookups, that's right, hookups.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
I bet you motion figured out, didn't you?
I don't know, did it? We'd figure it out.
I said, what I put is approve, approve starting the process for the recycling project.
Okay.
Any further discussion?
Is there a, so, is there a cost, what the city would put into in that motion? Or is this kind of up in the air, just up in the air right now?
They could at least start the letters and stuff.
And later, probably, put a price. In the letter, I noticed here, it says something.
Yes.
It doesn't say we, we're gonna put a hundred dollars, we'll take that sentence out for now.
That was my suggestion.
Yeah, or you could just say that we will contribute some, or, I don't know, leave it out.
Yeah, we're contributing in your place with the bin.
Wow.
I'm not, I'm not a strong supporter of recycling.
That's very generous.
I'll tell you that right now.
Very generous.
I tell you about recycling, composting and stuff, I've lived here nearly fifteen years, I've yet to get garbage.
Broke?
I hold the, I hold the entire year's worth of garbage. Hold the entire year's worth of garbage last year, and it cost me thirty dollars for a whole year.
Does it recycling and composting?
Add it recycling, composting, and burning, it should be burning. Guys, it's stuff, it works.
Things that you're burning, that's not very good.
It's no worse than a brick shot, my neighbor lost three of his railroad ties.
Yikes.
Okay. Motion on the table, any further discussion?
Aye.
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 Okay. Excuse me, the historical monument, Dr. Kim, oh, no, sorry, Jim. No.
She wanted to do the school, like, question.
Oh, gee. Run fast.
Historical monument gazebo.
Yes. Well, I don't, you all have a picture of that monument, Jim, and, yes. And maybe you saw it in the paper, too. And I actually have some other pictures that you might want to look at, of his artwork. I went to, he displays his artwork at Four Ravens Gallery, sure, yeah. It's in Missoula. Yeah, Four Ravens Gallery in Missoula. He actually sold this horse, he sold this already, this horse head, yeah. He is very talented. That's the kind of artwork that he is looking to build here. He's gonna use that same technique to make this, I had some people asking me, "Well, this is gonna be a flat sign"? No, it's not gonna be flat, it's gonna be three-dimensional.
I don't see the wood back.
And actually, he recently-
Yeah, this year.
Came up with a different base. There were some issues that the commissioners were concerned about where we're gonna put it. And so this base is more movable, would be easier to move, we had to move it. I'm not sure that it's necessary, but anyway, he came up with a little bit different. I mean, it's still gonna have this, all of this, he was just looking at the base, maybe be different. But, the commissioners, I've had three meetings with them, and they can't seem to make up their mind where they want to put it. They want, they like it, but I really think it should be on Fourth and River, to draw people off the interstate, but, yeah, exactly. I mean, it says Superior Monument, right on the top of it. So I definitely think as a council, we should be behind it in some fashion.
What are the commissioners of it? They're, I take it then, they're not opposed to it?
They're not opposed to the monument, they just didn't want it on that corner because people are complaining on Facebook.
Well, that's, yeah.
Don't even get me started on that soapbox.
That's dying, yeah.
The Facebook, they had all negative things about the tree, and that, you know, there were some heated fundraisers going on, that we thought was an obstacle, so, which I have a hard time agreeing with that. People are either gonna donate to this or not, or donate to both. But, so anyway, I, I have a meeting with them Friday, commissioners meeting, I'm on the agenda to make a decision about putting it over on, they're thinking about Fifth, and, is that Fifth, right there, right across from the bank?
No, Third, Third.
Third, sorry, going the wrong way, okay. Putting it on that corner of the-
Where the gazebo is at now?
Yes, yes.
It's not really a gazebo.
Yeah.
It's an information-
That's what they call it.
Right, so that's, that's why a, a kiosk, great, they're called it. I would like your permission to scoop that ugly thing off the corner of the lawn.
But they were so proud of it five years ago.
Yeah, well, it's kind of falling apart now. Yes, and I have four-
It would look differently, that it could work, but, I mean-
Not really as happy.
I think if it was, there was a map there of the town and everything else was put in there, and that would be a place where you could put pamphlets, where they could pick them up, but, as there is, there's nothing in there. Last time I looked at it, there was a notice, and it was three years old.
Right.
Looks like an outhouse with a wheelchair in it.
Oh, gosh.
Some of us have broad minds.
Well, anyway, I have four ideas, if the council would be interested in letting us figure out how to, I looked underneath it, I had actually Dwayne Reynolds look under, it's not attached, there's no, it's sitting on rocks, actually. So it'd just be a matter of jacking it up and driving maybe a trailer underneath it or something, and taking it up to our town yard, where we could fix it up. And, four, I have four ideas for it, don't be laughing.
Everybody's not laughing, you shaking his head up.
As long as you're not-
I'm retired, I do whatever you want. I'm serious, I'm out of here, I don't care.
Well, see, we have, already. So I have four different ideas that we could use that for. The one I really liked, it, I should have brought my, but Ernie said, "Please don't embarrass me", it's, I'll never be able to show my face in town again, but I did have my puppet that I was going to bring. His name is Albert Einstein, Big Al, he is actually a hand puppet. I think it would be awesome to fix that thing up, as, use it as a children's puppet theater in the summer in the park. That's, that's my creative idea for that. So that's one of the ideas. And I think I could actually get my church involved in fixing it up for that, because the man that helped the school kids build that goes to our church, so he said he would, he liked that idea, and thought, "Well, I think we could fix that up." So that's one idea. Then possibly use it as a concession stand in the, one of the parks, maybe sell, I'm glad Tim left the room, because I'm sure he'd have all kinds of comments about that. Or if we do get a new pool, we could use it as the hut, you know, the pool hut, you know, paint it up, put octopus on the top, I don't know, fix it up for the pool. Or, this is a really good, I, I kind of like this idea, too. If we get this recycling thing up and going, it could be, the person that is going to babysit the bin, could be there and have a place to stand out of the rain, cold, and could, we could use it as a, you know, place-
Page a good office.
An office for them, yes.
Who owns it?
I, I don't think the commissioners want to.
Four gallons, right?
It's just, right.
Just on their property.
I thought it was the industrial arts class at school.
No, and they, they don't want to claim it either, the commissioners.
Yeah, I don't know who wants to claim that.
Yeah, it's built.
It's kind of a nice, it really is a nice.
Yeah, so what I'm-
So the commissioners say that you can take it?
That's what, so I'm gonna ask them, I'm gonna say, "We'll take it off your hands, if you gift it to the, the town, we'll take it off your hands." So that's what I'm proposing. And I think we, I think we could use it in a lot of different ways. So, you can tell me, "Forget it, you're nuts", let them get rid of it.
Well, you know, the idea, the idea of using it as just a place for whoever, we gotta go up and pay for this person that's recycling, babysitting.
Oh, her name is Chris.
No, no, not, not title.
Oh, title, oh.
But a place for that person to get, you know, to sit out of the weather, have a place to sit.
Right, right, and we could have the kids maybe get involved in decorating it, they could paint it green, you know, put recycle paper on the, I don't know, you know.
Bottle caps, colored bottle caps.
Bottle caps, you know, they could decorate it, and, and get them involved, you know, the kids could help that person, you know, when their trucks come in, unload their, yeah.
Environment for science?
Yeah, Lorraine was saying Superior, I mean, St. Regis and Alberton have environmental policies, so I'm assuming Superior does, I don't know, you know? I'm not that-
I have to wait for school.
Well-
It's been a long time since I've been there.
My daughter graduated two thousand and four, and I haven't been there.
Hasn't been back?
Nope.
Well, I definitely, I bet they do, I bet they, or if they don't, but I'm sure that there's a way to get them off. So anyway, if, I, do we need a motion to let me just say to the commissioners, please give that to the town?
I'll make a motion, you can ask the commissioners for that.
For the whatever you want.
That's, uh, outhouse.
I think it should go on Emily's driveway.
Well, it might. Don't tell Ernie, don't tell Ernie, it might end up there.
Actually, with decoration, you can have a decorating party on Friday, y'all.
There you go, there you go. We'll put all kinds of lights on it.
Oh, I'm calling for questions.
Oh, we need a second? Oh, thank you, Bonnie.
Any further discussion? Questions?
Aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Guys, we're gonna get this, this thing built somehow, by hook or by cook, we're gonna get that built.
Come on, call up Ernie, tell him what you should have.
At least I didn't bring Big Al.
On this, on this.
Big Al, yes.
No, I don't know how the commissioners are, but-
You can come Friday.
If, if you put Mineral County in there, they might be a little bit more, you know-
Well, we did suggest that, I mean, yeah, and so on, on the inner, that inner circle of that big, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I could see them wanting to get, get on the board.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, that's just a rendering of what you can do, yeah. So, I'll keep you posted on whether we get that spot or not. If we get the spot, then I'll come back with more.
To elect council president. Right now it's Kelly in the hall.
You just nominate, just repeat.
I'll make a motion, we keep the same tune.
I second.
Okay, before they elect you?
We can wait every month, sit out, come out.
So Kelly is the president.
Okay.
Thomas for sure. Kelly as the president, and Vaughn as first president, second president, yeah.
Kelly. With authority.
So you can do that when you're elected for this position in May. Any further discussion? Questions?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Which reminds me, one of you passed to be here to do it in May.
In May, the fourteenth of May, I'll be gone.
Fourteenth of May.
Yes, sir.
I actually leave the twenty seconds.
We could hold council a little bit earlier than that.
And I don't come back till the eighteen. Can you hear that? All right, this night is here, and then I take that next week off. Oh, yeah.
No, no.
You know where to find me. Uh-huh. Okay, town cleanup day.
We should have one.
Yeah. Yeah. So, this is the eighteen calendar.
What did I tell you from the last year? Was it, is it the second weekend of the month? Twelve? No. Okay, where's my G's? Did you just go?
Memorial Day's, what, twenty-eighth?
Well, I'm home on the weekends, but I am going from the twenty-sixth of April to St. Regis. I have it in the memorial days. For that Friday.
No, it's Friday.
You know, it really works good to do it in May, it's temperature-wise.
Yeah, last year we did it on May twentieth, so if we kept the same week, it'd be May nineteenth this year, and the reason the hospital was asking is because that we've been competing with two other things, we've been competing with the veterans lunch at the high school, which is on the nineteenth, but that's always that today. And then, but the, their, what is their, their health fair?
Yeah, health fair.
It was the same day, so they were hoping that we wouldn't, we, two was easier to compete with than three. And so I think they're gonna set their, for May twelfth.
You mean the health fair?
The health fair's gonna be May twelfth.
I don't know why that, why cleanup interferes with the better.
I don't think it does so much, but I think it competed more with the hospital, so, but the twenty-sixth is Memorial Day, so-
The health fair was always the first Saturday of June, because that's the car show.
Car show.
Well, more people are out, so May nineteen is pretty busy.
May nineteen.
Make a motion, we have town cleanup for May nineteenth.
I second.
Yeah, let's do it. It's set up the same way as it was last year, it seemed to work quite well, quite better than it did.
Yeah, and you had all those notices out, didn't you, about what you think?
And we, and the guys didn't get run completely.
Yeah, that, yeah.
Didn't even know we was gonna be there.
Oh, good.
People, older people who definitely need it, and that's it, everybody, come to the side.
Yeah, Kelly Shirley, put her on the second page. Any further discussion? Questions?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Swimming pool, two thousand and eighteen licensure.
You kind of glossed around it last meeting, and didn't really say yes, no to do it, so-
We had ninety, ninety days, isn't that, was it, on the standard?
Yeah, but that's gonna put it past when he's gonna drain it. So, I haven't processed the check to go out, at least that keeps it open no matter what we do, until you make the final decision, which can be made.
And that's two hundred and-
Two twenty-five.
Yeah. Well, I made a motion that we just pay the licenses this year, and just to cover us, just in case you could fix it.
If it works, it works, if it don't, it don't.
Right.
Do you second it?
I do.
Any further discussion? Questions?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, first business?
Just my little miss here, and I'll tell you, you know, don't always believe the just good instructions, the instructions on the IRS website, actually not the IRS, the social security website, which is W-2s, I followed the instructions to make a correction, and I lost the ten to five.
Oh, no.
At ten to five. At 10 to 5.
Oh.
So I came in on Wednesday and sat and just re-entered everything. Yeah. So that was my really lovely happening this month. But other than that, most of it's the same stuff that we have every month.
You don't back up your file?
No, this was... We do our W-2s online right onto the social security website. So there's no backup for me until I submit and get the PDF. And I read the instructions on how to back it back out, delete this to back it back out and be able to make the correction, but whatever happened took the entire fallout.
That's when you wanted this to...
Yeah. Yes.
No way to cut the page, huh?
No, there was no way. It was just start back over and re-enter all 37 if I wanted it. It's not too bad. I actually like doing it on that website better because it verifies all the W... Or all the social security numbers in a heartbeat. So if you put one in there wrong, it will not let you move forward until you fix it or figure out or delete that one and find out the information and go ahead and finish others. So, yeah, it works out pretty good. So other than that, it's just a... I wired the funds for the water and sewer loan payments, the semi annual ones. Oh, we had Dan Johnson from the USDA, and the USDA were the funders of the GO bond, the general application bond that we have on the fire hall. They were the funding agency behind that, and they came in and did a tour. We gave them a tour of the fire hall, and they went, looked at the files a little bit, questioned the number of people we have in our bases. And yes. Yes, it was one of the questions that they have to ask.
National...
Just... Yes. Yes, it's one of those things that they have to ask to put into their report to the feds. And then he also brought up, when this fire hall was built, in the floor is the piping for the heat system. But the heat system is not connected because we, at the time we built it, we didn't have the funds to finish that. And so he was asking about that, what we... Where plans were, and so we're asking you where you want us to kind of go with this. Roger was going to talk to Kirby if they can find out what...
If they have.
If they have anything or where to go to get some information, how much it costs to do the system.
So that's... So it'd be in for water. Kirby doesn't have a water boiler. I tried to do mine.
Okay.
But there are very efficient boilers out there now. Condescending boilers are very, I mean, some efficient. But, you know, you best to... And I can tell you, I guess my boiler alone was $15,000.
Does anything under $80,000?
That's not installed, that's just a boiler.
Yeah. Under $80,000, you don't have to bid. You can go out and, you know, you can solicit like free, whatever you want.
Three estimates.
But you don't have to go out and advertise the bid under state law.
Well, okay, you don't have to advertise with paper. Okay.
If it's under 80...
But don't you think it'd be a good idea to call a couple of people?
Absolutely. I agree. That's what I'm saying, is you should do that kind of stuff, but you're not required to go out for a formal bid process.
That's what I... I mean, that's what I would do is just ask a couple of people first.
Okay.
If, you know... I don't know if we have funds to put it in or not. What are we heating with now?
Propane.
Okay, hot air, a lot. See, so we could use the same propane. Because that's, like I said, the one I put in was 18% efficient and it proheat.
So we just need to figure out who we can get ahold of and get some information and bring it back to you guys. Okay. Yeah.
And I'm sure the fire department probably like it, you know, because when you heat the floor, then you bring that equipment in, you know? Yeah, and it melts it quicker and everything dries quicker and...
We talked about this when we talked about building the fire hall. All those good advantages, we just couldn't come up with enough money to do it.
Yeah, we ran out of money on that one, so... So he was asking about that. So, and then the other thing is the senior housing project on Maple Street. The bids will be open on the 18th of this month. Yeah, they did a...
I was through. There was a group of...[1382.82][1382.82](Laughter) The white said she thought they were in vain.
Yeah, there's probably 10, 12 contractors.
Yeah. Yeah. So that project is... The bids will be opened on the 18th of this month, so those awards should be probably early, late, potentially, late, late January, early, early February, I think. So that...
I'm sure it will, won't it?
I think so. I think so.
Yeah, it's been scaled back. They were going to do it all, but now all they're doing is just the walls. Contractors are going to have to do all the footing and all that stuff. The timeframe for the school and the project didn't match, so they can do the walls.
But the thing is, it took a lot of time on the... I think the county was...
Yeah.
For universities, the...
It paid about a year.
Cities, the towns, the states. So, anyway, but that's where that project is, so it is moving forward.
Wait a minute, I gotta... But how come Northwestern Energy is so divided up? Is each one of these a different entity?
Different, like the one that has a big...
$4,000, that takes a city light, a street light?
Oh, no. The streetlights are only, you know, 1,600 to 1,800 a month. The sewer lagoon is about 1,500 a month. The... Each of the wells are anywhere from $550 to $850 a month. Yeah. It's all broke down into... And the pump, where the tank is, has its own meter, and it's... Everything has their own meters. All the parks, you know?
So we don't... There's no way for us to know, like, which one is for which?
Here, I can show you. I can pretty well tell you. Okay.
I want to know.
Right. Okay, 2,400, that's a street lighting. That's just like one single light. Okay? Okay. So anything, 520, 520, 520, 520, those are the... These three are the wells, the 518, 73, the 59481, 70448. That is probably the tank. I don't know the exact number here. This is one of the sewer lift stations, because we have four lift stations. They each have their own meter.
So each one of these codes is a fund?
Is a fund, yes. And that tells you where it's coming from. That right there, the 531, that's 1,600, that's your treatment plant.
Okay.
So that's the sewer lagoon itself. This one here is a park, 460, that's a general fund, and it's 460, 400, it's one of the... Probably one of the buildings, because they're really low in the wintertime. And then we're back to the tank, a flat brick. And that always spikes when they have... When the little heater has to run to keep it warm up there. This one here, the 1,806, the 4... Let's see... No, the 1,699, and the 2,400, that's your streets, streetlights. The 1,800, 2,400 fund is the street lighting district, so that's only paying the street light on it. The... This is the parks, lights and buildings. And then this one is the fire hall siren, I think it is. I still think of that siren. That's an odd one. And then there's another one. There's one for the swimming pool, and we don't close it off in the wintertime, but it's like, in the wintertime, it's only like $6 a month, so...
One question.
Yeah, because the way they bill them, I love it to go on one bill. But, yeah, it's about $6,000 a month of electricity for this town.
Well, and the other question I had here is, comes Northwest, if they done 1,700 and $5,000, right?
They come in and service...
That's to do the generator.
Right.
Now, do we own the generators?
Yes. That's the maintenance agreement.
Did we ever... Because that's being outsourced out of town, did we ever contact other organizations like, you know, to do a maintenance on them?
No.
And see if that would be a cheaper option?
No, they were the ones that supplied the generators.
So that's why you kept them on them. It seems a little bit high to service three generators, me, you know?
No, I'm just comfortable with them because I've had them since they've been in, and they always rely on them.
But I mean, I can tell you, Cat has generators, you know? What's they called? Green Lightning, they all have generators. Peterbilt can service the same thing, Broken Tenler. And there's other options out there. I just... I just thought that that was kind of high for servicing just three generators.
It's high enough.
Well, and so they've already been serviced, so, I mean, it does no good for this year. I don't know. I think sometimes, you know, some of these things, we ought to possibly call around and ask.
It wouldn't hurt?
It wouldn't hurt to call around and ask about pricing. That's the only questions I had.
Any further discussion?
I have a motion.
I'll second.
This time I heard Rick first.
Any further discussion?
Aye.
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 I make a motion to a chair.
Did I do it? I did. You got in there. You were good, Bonnie.
Okay, Shirley.
Girl.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Yes. I don't know if I want to.
Aye.
Depends on what vehicle you drove.
Aye.
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 Don't leave.